Item on the public hearing is a bid opening for the sale of the property. We put the power plant location up for, up for a bid, so we got, we had one bid that was submitted. And then we had one bid that was submitted after the deadline, so we will not be able to look at that bid. At this time, I will open the bid that we have. And then we will just read the bid amount, and then the council will take action on that in the regular session. We have one submitted bid of thirty-eight thousand dollars to the city of Fairfield for the power plant building property. The tanks and the fuel in the tanks. So that was the only bid that was submitted. There was, again, there was one, but it was after the deadline, so we cannot accept that. Any public comments on the discussion of the power plant bid? If not, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing, and we'll move on to the, a little bit early on the public hearing for the appropriations. I do have some copies available, if somebody would like a copy of the appropriations. I've got a list here, I'll just run down through the appropriations, but before I do that, is there any comments from the public on the appropriations that the city council will take an action on this evening for the new fiscal year? Seeing no public comments, I'll just kind of run down each department. I'm just going to give you the appropriations as what's appropriated for each department. The police department has appropriations of two point one million. The cemetery has appropriations of three hundred and thirty-four thousand. Our garage, two twenty-seven, three hundred, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred. Street and bridge, one million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred. Fire department, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred. Administration, one million, seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred. Airport, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and fifty. Industrial, fifty thousand. Board of health, seventy thousand, three twenty-five. Auxiliary police, and that's for the building across the road, that's just utilities of two thousand. Finance and meter reading, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five. Library, a hundred and fifty thousand. Economic development, eighty thousand, nine fifteen. Water filtration, two million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. Water distribution, two million, eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred. Water waste, nine hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty. Gas department, two million, fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Power plant, sixty thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Electrical distribution, nine million, three hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred. For a department total of twenty-five million, eighty-eight thousand, one seventy-five. Also included in the appropriations is a motor fuel tax of nine hun- or two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred. TIF number one, two million, seven hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred. Nothing for TIF two. The fire pension, one fifty-six, five seventy-five. And the police pension of four hundred and sixteen, one fifty-eight. For a grand total of appropriations of twenty-eight million, seven hundred and twenty dollars, one hundred and eight dollars. And a revenues of eighteen million, three thirty-one, seven oh five. Any public comments? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comments for the appropriation, and we'll be back in about five minutes to start the regular council meeting. Stay tuned, and thank you. He's hooked up, he's unavailable to be here in person, but the way the law is written, he still can't attend via telephone conference. So at this time, if we will all please rise, Ms. Louise Morton will lead us into.
Praise the Father, we thank you for this day. And thank you for all the blessings that you bestowed on our lives. Thank you for our country and our freedom. We know, God, that our world is probably in a bad shape, but we know, God, that you are in whose control of everything. And we thank God for the alderman mayor. We ask God that you will give them knowledge and wisdom, and let them know exactly the right decisions that they make tonight. And we thank God for the mayor and the city attorney, the city clerk, our police department, fire department, and for all the employees that are here in the city of Fairfield. We're asking God that we can all work together and go forward and focus upon the important things that are facing the city of Fairfield. We thank you, God, again, for everything, and in the name of Jesus, we all say, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever changing.
All right, we will now have a roll call, please.
Acting Mayor Gary Moore.
Present.
Attorney Darren Rice.
Here.
Alderman Dewey Eccleberry.
Here.
Alderman Cordyatta Berry.
Here.
Clifford Reaver.
Here.
Alderman Tyler Lampley.
Here.
Alderman Eugene McGill.
Present.
Alderman Jerry Lysenby.
Here.
Alderman Perry Stahl.
Here.
And we have a quorum. We will move on to the approval of the minutes of the last meeting, it was included in your packets. If there are no changes or corrections to the minutes, is there a motion to approve them as they are?
I'll make that motion.
I'll start.
Have a motion by Stahl, a second by McGill, to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Adderbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lysenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
And those minutes are approved. Next would be the approvals that, for the bills that were submitted. Any questions on any of the bills? If there are none, are there, is there a motion to approve the bills as they are?
I'll make that motion.
I'll start.
Have a motion by Eccleberry, a second by Stahl, to approve the bills. Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lysenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Adderbury?
Yes.
And the bills are approved. At this time, we will open it up for public comments. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the council, we ask that you step up forward, state your name and your address, and you will have three minutes to address the council. At this time, is there anybody that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will close the public comment section and move on to routine business. Item number one was a request of Sunrise Sanitation. They notified us late yesterday afternoon that she would not be in attendance with her attorney, so she's asked it to be removed from today's council meeting and put on the next agenda for the next council meeting. In speaking with Attorney Rice, you know, that's, we're going to go ahead and honor that request, and we will put her on the agenda for the next council meeting. Item number two in routine business is the appropriation ordinance. We had, we held a brief meeting prior to this, we went over the appropriations. I have given a copy of the appropriations to the press. Again, I do have extra copies, if anybody would like to have a copy of those appropriations. And at this time, I will open it up for discussions with the, with the council on the appropriations.
I'll, I'll start. We held our meeting here a couple weeks ago, went through, just, you know, a reminder, appropriations isn't a budget. You know, we don't have to spend everything that's in there, and we won't spend everything that's in there. There's a lot of grants. Appropriations only show the expenses, so if you have a grant that's coming back, you only show the expense side of it. That's why it's always going to be topsy-turvy. So when you look at that, we also have the two million dollar water tower in there. We've got street projects, we've got a lot of different big ticket items in there. Some things may, may not happen. You have to appropriate it in case it will happen. That's why it looks like it does one way or the other. You know, it looks like we're spending a lot more than we have. Some things won't be spent if we don't get the grant. There's fire, department, police, they get a lot of grants. Airport is a huge one that gets a lot of grants. If we don't get the grants, we don't spend the money, and then everything still comes to the council, right? It's kind of, want to make sure everybody's really, you know, thinks that through, that we still have the chance to approve or disapprove, depending on how the year goes, everything else that's in there, but if we think it might get spent, you put it in the appropriations.
Correct. And again, it is a little bit different than what, you know, a lot of us consider as a budget. You know, we budget for things, knowing that we're going to spend them. You know, here, we're, we're appropriating money, and it's yet to be determined whether it will be spent or not. Other discussions?
If there's none, I will make a motion to approve this year's appropriations.
I'll start.
We have a motion by Lampley to approve the appropriations, a second by Lysenby. Lampley?
Yes.
Lysenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Adderbury?
Yes.
And Eccleberry.
Yes.
And the appropriations have passed. Item number three is a discussion with a possible action to take a look at meter rates and some utility rate increases. You know, again, this is one of those things, nobody wants their utility bills to increase, but, you know, if you take a look, if you take a look at some of the appropriations under our electrical distribution, you know, we're getting ready to spend seven hundred thousand dollars on, on meters that can be read remotely. You know, so it takes us, you know, some time to pay for that. You know, the finance committee had a schedule, a five-year schedule set, you know, that addressed meter facility or meter rate charges. And again, the finance committee, which is Alderman Lampley, Alderman Adderbury,
and Stahl.
and Alderman Stahl, you know, they held their meetings and do deal and silly work through everything. And I, this time, I'll turn it over to Alderman Lampley, you know, to bring his projections forward.
Yeah, so I sat down over the course of about six hours in front of my computer and took all the information from last year, what we ended the year with, with our budgets. Knowing that water and sewer are a hit, back in 2019, Connor and Connor told us what we needed to do with water and sewer. We decided at that time that we couldn't put in those rate increases into effect at that level. We did a tiered approach, which is what I'm going to be asking for again. I still will not get to his level. Connor and Connor recommended, that's our engineers, in 2019, that we change our meter charge to twenty-five dollars a month plus a rate that is still higher than what I will be projecting. I, you know, I just can't see us doing that. What we, what I'm looking for is to get our water filtration and distribution department to not losing money. Last year, water filtration, distribution, we had to put them together, because they can make water if we don't have pipes to get it to the houses. That doesn't, it doesn't mean anything. We lost three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We didn't have the big ticket expenses that we'll have this year. We have membranes, five hundred thousand dollars that are, we were buying. Luckily, we've already budgeted, we have it in an account. We've had Kayla putting money back each month to pay for those. Our chemical costs last year went up thirty percent. We didn't do a rate increase to cover that, but this year, they've went up, they're projected to be about a hundred percent up. So we'll be expected to pay another hundred thousand dollars in chemical cost out of our water filtration plant. You know, just as cycles go, the plant's getting a little older. We've already spent twenty-five thousand dollars on pumps and motors. We have to buy new radios, which, these are things that we can't put off. We don't have a choice. Everything I'm talking about isn't anything we can put off. It's nothing that you can really get ahead of. We have to do these. It's just a part of having, owning our own water filtration, and the costs are rising quicker than our tiered step we have. So the plant I- So, the plan I put into place is a five-year plan. Starting out, I broke it still in residence, non-residence, and then the meter charge. And then it's just a small step. I took the meter charge up, uh, the, uh, couple dollars for this first year, and then it'll go up a dollar each year on that. And then the water rate going up a quarter each year through the five years per one thousand gallons. Tried to make it as minimal, because I don't want anybody to be hit so hard. My, in total package that I have here, which is water, sewer, gas, and electric, I figured, refigured my electric bill and city bill, both Wayne White and the city bill. We're look, I was looking at about an eight dollar fifty cent to nine dollar total increase in my bill. It's just, I hate that we're talking about it in a time where there's inflation, but unfortunately, the inflation's hitting every single one of our departments. So that was my water proposal. Then in sewer, um, on that one, we charge, uh, currently four dollars a thousand gallons of sewer to process. Um, I'd say taking it to four dollars and fifty cents a thousand, and then going up fifty cents next year, but then just a quarter a year per thousand gallons after that. And then a dollar on each of the meter charge a year for five years. Um, in our sewer department, we have a lot of, uh, we had to buy the influence screen, which we put in this year, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And as most or everybody knows, our sewer plant right now is more than ten years past its expected life expectancy. So, the maintenance on that is gonna be going up, and at some point, we'll have to be looking at our next step out there. Luckily, we've got John and the guys out there that do an excellent job. They win awards running that, uh, department out there, keeping it clean and well put together. And that's why it's done as well as it has, but, so I have just a slight tiered increase each year so that it doesn't affect anybody as, I mean, as little as possible. Um, and then on electric and gas both, all I did was tweak the meter charge. We already had a five-year plan in place. I kinda just continued that out to get it moving forward. Electric went out a little bit longer, kinda, uh, following that we have a long-term contract with an agent, you know, just saying, hey, we need to just go ahead and go out longer. So the electric follows the contract that we have in place, and then it can be adjusted with the next contract or whatever. So it's a ten-year plan of just, um, a dollar fifty a year, or per month a year, for a while. And then, uh, gas was just, uh, a dollar a year on the meter charge. No changes to rates to electricity, no changes to rates on gas. We have a formula that seems to work. It has, you know, kind of a multiplier and effect that we don't need to tweak, we don't need to change. Our rates are fine, it's just, you know, tweaking to make sure that we get the margin that we need to, to operate our city. I will open it up for any questions.
All the numbers that adds up to both, like, how much a month?
Um, I have, let's see, sorry. Uh, in sewer, the first year, like I said, we lost three hundred and thirty thousand dollars last year. We'll add fifty-nine thousand dollars to that department's own, I mean, so we'll still, we're still projected to lose in, or not, yeah, that was, or, in water, sorry. We're still projected to lose about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in water, plus the big expenditures. Um, sewer will still be projected with some of the big expenditures. If you took out the influence screen, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with this plan, it would be just above break even, and then, so.
And what did you say the cost would be to the residents, is that what you were?
Total monthly bill to?
I think he's.
My, I mean, I'm, I'm, I was looking at the low usage, because that's kinda gonna be the highest percentage increase. My bill, when I refigured it, was coming in about eight dollars and fifty cents to nine dollars a month higher, between Wayne White bill and the city bill combined.
Totally, eight dollars?
Yeah.
Eight, eight.
Yeah.
And again, that would be based on your usage, you know, as, you know?
On, on the water side of it, there's no change to the rates on the gas or electric.
Is what it is.
And also on that rate, Tyler, I believe, was we going to, you know, currently, we have with the security lights, you know, we get a?
Yes, sorry, I forgot to bring that. Um, the next part would be, we have, we now have two sizes of security lights that we need to have in play. Um, the smaller security light was following our meter charge. Don't really think that's fair with a tiered step on that. We collect enough, I think that just needs to be a base rate of ten dollars. And then having a bigger security light for some of the commercial people that would like to have a bigger one, making it twenty dollars, because it uses quite a bit more electricity. That way, it's a very clean cut, and it's not gonna be stepped or tiered, because it's just gonna be there un-metered.
Yeah, yeah, the security lights are un-metered, but currently, uh, when the, when the, uh, monthly charge was added, i- if the meter charge increased, the cost for your security light also increased. We're just gonna have, uh, Attorney Rice, when he writes the ordinance for the increases in the meter charges, if passed, you know, that he will just strike through, allowing the security lights to follow the meter charge. It would just be a flat fee of ten dollars or twenty dollars, just depending on which light you have.
Yeah. And the vast majority of our people have the smaller ones, we didn't even have the bigger light until.
Yeah, we just put out a, we just passed the proposal for the four hundred directional a couple of council meetings ago. I mean, they have installed a few, but, you know, we need to back the facility charge from there, from increasing it each month.
Yeah, so that'll actually get a little bit of a decrease on that, because it wasn't intended to go that way, and that needs to just be corrected.
Any other discussion? If, if there are no discussions, is there a motion to approve the meter rate increase and the water rate increase as presented?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Lampley, a second by Stahl, to approve the meter and utility rate increase. Lysenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Um, Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
And that motion is approved. Uh, item number four on discussion with possible action, uh, is the buyout of a mini excavator for the gas department. Uh, we entered into a lease agreement, uh, a few years back, uh, you know, to rent this, uh, piece of equipment. Uh, the company has approached us and asked us if we would like to be interested in buying the contract out. Uh, currently remaining out, it's called rent, but it's our monthly fee. Uh, we owe three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. Um, and the sales of the piece of equipment as, when the contract had ended, was agreed upon twenty-four thousand, four oh seven oh one, which we made the total buyout of this piece of equipment. So we're paying what's remaining on our rent, our monthly fee, and, and then the purchase price agreed upon when, when we first started the, uh, the program. For a total bid of, uh, twenty-eight thousand, one thirty-one, thirty-three. Um, again, it, it does, I mean, i- it would be my recommendation that we approve this and, and just bu- buy the equipment and be done with, with the rental. And, uh, I mean, it's pretty shortcoming anyway, uh, you know, that we'd have to make a decision to buy it or not.
Yeah, I mean.
Discussion on it?
Uh, Dee, is it, how many hours does that machine get put on a year, do you know?
I would say around a hundred roughly. I don't know, I don't know, I've got my head in dures.
Not a lot, though.
Uh, we have to, uh, one per, got one, probably use a little more.
Okay. But it'll last a long time, anyway.
Yeah, could.
That's, I mean, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Second, Reaver, Reaver, okay. Have a motion by Lampley, a second by Reaver, to approve the buyout of the mini excavator for the gas department. McGill?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yeah.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
And Lysenby?
Yes.
And that motion is approved. Item number five on the agenda is the authorization of a memo of understanding with the IBEW in terms of residency. Uh, again, uh, we just negotiated an FOP contract where we had to, we, we extended the residency clause to be forty men, is it forty or forty-five, Keith?
Forty-five.
Forty-five minutes from the police department. The last time we negotiated, uh, you know, we negotiated with the IBEW first, uh, and we came up with a residency plan for them, and then we negotiated with the FOP, and we come up with a different boundary line from them. At that time, the council chose to come back to the IBEW and allow them the same residency clause back then. Again, this year, the, in the IBEW negotiations, residency wasn't discussed, but with the FOP, in hopes that we could get some more applicants, uh, from some larger towns, we chose to go forty-five minutes from the, from the police department. Uh, the IBEW has requested that we honor giving them the same residency, uh, as the FOP. Uh, again, just my personal opinion, uh, all of our city employees are very important to us and, and, uh, uh, an asset to us. And I feel that that residency should be extended for both, uh, contract partners. Discussion?
Well, the reason we went for police, because they were having issues with finance officers.
That is true.
We do not have that problem with city workers.
Not yet.
Well, not yet. Um, and with them being on call after hours, that would put that person an hour away by the time they got the call to come check something out. The police officers are in twenty-four hour, so there's always someone there.
Okay, um, I, I guess, I understand that, uh, you know, with, uh, just, let's just take our natural gas department. I mean, it is, uh, you know, they are required to be X amount of minutes away from, from their service. Uh, if we're talking about, you know, an emergency or something, uh, you know, if it's in town, whether it's, it's gas, uh, you know, the, the call will also go to the, to the Fairfield Fire Department, you know, to help shut off the flow of gas, uh, evacuate what has to be evacuated. Uh, if it's a water leak, you know, understand, you know, that it might take a little while to get there, you know. Looking at the nucleus of our employees, I don't see any employee either, from either the police department nor the city that is gonna sell their house and move forty-five minutes away.
I agree with that.
Um, y- you know, me personally, I feel it's more important that our police department be a little closer than, than it is for, you know, a water leak, um, you know, or even, even a natural gas. I mean, there's some, you know, terrible things that can happen, and we need all of our police on deck. Uh, you know, that's my opinion, I mean, I, you know, and, and we all just need to talk about it and see. I mean, I understand what you're saying, I do, but, you know, I don't see any employee selling their house and saying, I'm gonna move forty-five minutes away. Now, can they? Absolutely, uh, but, you know.
I, I feel, you know, they may, you may pull from a bigger applicant pool, and people would wanna move here closer. I mean, for one, gas is as high as it is, and why, why spend that much time each day? But yeah, you're right, I mean, they can live that far away. But whatever we can do to have the best employees, I mean, we've had, let's see, the last, uh, water filtration, I mean, one applicant, I mean, or, you know, one that made the cut, I mean, there's only been a handful. I mean, we're getting just as low on that as we are with police applicants.
Yeah, our, our last hire for the, for the water filtration plant, you know, was employed in Mount Vernon. I mean, he has bought a house here and, and, uh, resides here now. The last applicant for, one of the last applicants for the first, uh, police department, uh, you know, was about five hundred and fifty feet on the wrong side of the road. You know, he sold his house and he bought a house here in town. Uh, again, uh, yeah, I mean, I mean, it is what it is. There's talk of, you know, if, if you look at different towns and what they're doing for residency, I mean, there's a lot of them that are, happen to open up the residency to, to get the employees that, to, to come to work. Y- you know, uh, you know, Albion just extended theirs, Carmi just extended theirs, um. Thoughts from the other council members?
Was there, uh, isn't there, what, isn't there a response time now in place?
Well, for the, for the gas department, I believe it's thirty minutes that they have, you know, they have response, you know. Uh, and, you know, our, a lot of our departments have on-call employees who carry a pager, uh, you know, but they're still not restricted, uh, you know, to sit at home, uh, and, and wait for a call. I mean, you know, we expect them, if they get a call, to have a, you know, a normal response time. Um, and again, depending on what the call is, uh, you know, the, there's a lot of EMS, you know, Andrews group goes out, uh.
We're really only talking about fifteen extra minutes.
Well, yeah, uh, well.
You know, as far as.
Depends what you, and, and also, you know, I might wanna add that under the FOP, it says forty-five minutes within the state of Illinois, uh, from the police department, because there was an opportunity, you know, being forty-five minutes away, uh, with, you could live in New Harmony.
Yeah.
And, and we didn't wanna do that, and we're gonna ask the IBEW for the same residency, forty-five minutes from the police department within the state of Illinois. Um, you know, so, I mean, the area that the current, uh, IBEW has, is they have to live north of the Barn Hill Crossroads. They have to live south of one sixty-one. They need to live on the east side of the road of, of the, uh, Sims Road there, that goes by the tavern. And they need to live on the west side out by Beulah's Cafe, you know. So if you go from Beulah's Cafe to Wayne City or Mount Vernon, yeah, you, I mean, you know, it's maybe another fifteen minutes or so on the other side of the, of our current line, which, you know, is not a huge amount, y- you know, um.
Well, I think we should go for it, you know. As a motion, if you need a motion, I'd make it.
Well, let's, I mean, let's go ahead and, I mean, if there's, uh, you know, discussions, let's, let's get it all out there and, you know, so that way, we're all nodding our heads the same way.
I think, as Tyler said, the main reason to expand residency for police or anyone is to draw in more applicants and, you know, because we just don't have the population, obviously, for having one or two people apply, so I think it's a good thing, and I don't, I don't see anything wrong with it.
I'll second your motion.
So we've got a, a motion by Alderman Lysenby and a second by Alderman McGill to extend the same residency to the IBEW that we currently have with the FOP. Roll call?
Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
No.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lysenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
And that motion is approved. Um, item number six is the award, the bid of the sale of the electrical, uh, property. We held a public meeting for bid opening. Uh, we had one bid submitted, uh, that bid submitted was for thirty-eight thousand dollars uh, for the power plant property, the building, there's some tanks and some fuel in the tanks. Um, so, at this time, we'll open it up for open discussion of whether we want to accept the bid of thirty-eight thousand dollars or we wanna reject the bid for thirty-eight thousand dollars. Discussion?
We have no use for this billing.
We have no use for this billing, that is a true statement.
This is the second time we put it up for bids, and every time we bid it, it costs us for advertising and, and what have you, so.
And this property does not have the water tower property on it, right? Or it's been removed? And this property does not have the water tower property on it, right, or it's been removed from this?
The, the water tower, we, we still, there's still some telecommunications in that building that we, we will have to remove, I believe, is a true statement.
Yes.
Yes.
But there was one time when we put out for bid that the water tower property was actually on that.
Alderman, attorney Rice, I mean.
Yes.
Did you hear Alderman Eccleberry's question?
Yes, yes, that was, uh, at that time, um, and I will say that the legal description is, uh, quite, uh, um, it's r- lengthy and very difficult to, uh, make out when you compare it with the assessor's maps. But, um, at the one time, the first time we bitted it out, um, the person interested in it was wanting that space as well. And I don't believe, um, you know, that's included in the current description, but that's, yeah.
Okay, the water tower property is not included in the, in the description of the, of the today's purchase offer?
Yes, it's not supposed to, yeah, that's not in there, so.
Okay.
I would make that motion as long as we have for sure that the property for water tower is not in that cell ordered, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I will, I will make sure that, um, that that is definitely excised out, but I believe it already is, so.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, so we, we have a motion by Alderman Eccleberry and a second by Alderman Lizzy B. to accept the bid of thirty-eight thousand dollars with the understanding that the property that the water tower is on is excluded from that sale.
Correct.
Roll call please.
Stoll.
Yes.
Adderbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzy B.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yes.
And that motion passes, uh, do you wanna give the successful bidder? Shannon Withrow, standing back here at the back, uh, you know, he is the successful bidder. Again, we did have another bid, but it was turned in too late for, to be considered. Uh, so we'll have Alderman, or, I don't know why I keep wanna call you Alderman. Attorney Rice, get with, uh, get with him and get the paperwork properly drawn up and, and, uh, get the property transferred.
Yes, sir, I will get to work on that.
Uh, item number seven is to seek the bids for some water filtration chemicals, um. Again, as, uh, Alderman Lampley stated, you know, the price of everything is just continuing to go up, you know, no matter what it is. Uh, you know, chemicals are going up a hundred percent or better, uh, you know, so we need to see if we wanna authorize, uh, Josh Boyd to seek some water filtration bids for some chemicals, uh, you know, a couple of the questions that he's asked is, do we wanna bid for a year, do we wanna bid for six months, you know, what, what the council would like to do, um, y- you know, to take a look at how far out we wanna take bids, uh, nobody knows what the economy's gonna do, I mean, it's hard to say. Uh, but, you know, I, I feel it's important that we protect ourselves as much as we can against chemicals.
I mean, this past year, I know, for a fact, we, we came out very good coming up to the end of this contract. They had to hold some of the prices down, we still saw, you know, a very significant increase over the year from the prior year, but we would've already been seeing these a hundred percent increases if we wouldn't have, they wanted to implement them about three months ago. I don't know about six months through a year, but I, with everything going on between Russia and Ukraine, it didn't seem to be getting any better and Ukraine is the number one supplier of some of the, at least the start of the compounds for most of these chemicals and things like that. I would almost look at doing a year personally, just because there's too much uncertainty.
Uh, we would like to maybe extend some bids seeking out for a year, uh, is there a motion to, for that?
I'd make a motion.
Alderman Reaver.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Lampley, roll call vote please.
Adderbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzy B.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yes.
Stoll.
Yes.
And that motion passes. Uh, item number nine is a discussion of possible appro- approval on some grant writing services, uh, you know, right now, the city has used Greater Wall Bash. Look, they, okay, back up, I'm sorry, I, item number eight is discussion of possible, possible action on the revolving loan for Mindy So- So- Socha. Uh, Doug Skaggs is here on behalf of Mindy to make, uh, you know, tell what's Mindy's looking for, uh, Doug?
Okay, Doug, I'm here.
Y- if you, if you like, you step up here. I mean, you can, you can stand and look at, at the mic and that way.
If you dare, I was off camera, probably.
Turn sideways, kinda turn sideways. Hey Doug, turn sideways so they're not looking at you. There you go.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right, I'm here to present, uh, make a presentation on behalf of Mindy Socha, they are seeking a revolving loan, uh, uh, loan from the city for fifteen thousand dollars. She has, uh, already, uh, got a loan for fifteen thousand, it's currently being paid, all the payments have been made on time and some have been made ahead a little bit. But due to expansion in her business and additional job added, she is able to apply for, uh, an additional loan from the revolving fund. She's planning to use this loan for the purchase of some new equipment, including some combination of three different things. The first is a hat press, this is gonna allow her to expand production of embroidered hats. She's had a whole lot of demand from businesses around here and, uh, and other organizations wanting embroidered hats. The current process she has takes her about fifteen to twenty minutes per hat to produce. The hat press, when she has it, will allow this to be reduced to about twenty seconds a hat. It's gonna vastly improve what she can do, that's part of the volume of orders she can take and what she is able to do design-wise as well. The second is a laser engraver, this will allow her to start a new product line of engraving, customizing mugs, keychains, things like that for companies or schools or other organizations that would like this done. But she's not able to, she's not currently doing this, this would be a brand-new product line for her at this time. The third machine is, uh, either going to be a print and cut or a direct-to-garment machine. This is a transfer machine that will allow for transfers of different kinds of materials to be put on shirts or hats or any other kind of material that can be done. The main advantage for this for her is it's going to allow her to do these things in-house instead of having to send it out to be done to, for the transfer to be, uh, actually put on things. And this will also allow her to do some custom orders, there will be no minimum that she has to send out forward. She, if somebody comes in and wants one or two shirts, whatever the volume is, or whatever it is, she can accommodate it with this machine. Overall, this is going to help her in the next few months to add at least one additional, maybe go in one additional full-time job to her place and depending on how the demand, if the demand continues to grow, might be more than that. Uh, anyway, uh, that's the presentation I have, if you have any further questions for, Mindy is here to answer.
That, that is a request for fifteen thousand dollars and a, and a current interest rate charged to that loan is four point seven five percent. Discussion from the council?
I, I think it's amazing, that's what we have the revolving loan for, the only question, how, how much do we have in our revolving loan available?
Currently somewhere in the area of a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
I mean, I think this is great, you know, it's a downtown business wanting to expand and we should fully support it.
Yeah, and maybe the addition of a, of a full-time employee, uh, you know, it's, it's for all the right reasons.
And I'll make the motion if.
I'll second. Motion by Alderman Lampley and second by Alderman Lizzy B., roll call.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzy B.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yes.
Stoll.
Yes.
Adderbury.
Yes.
And that motion is approved. Uh, now we can jump to number nine, uh, that's discussion and possible approval on some grant writing services. Uh, you know, currently, uh, the city of Fairfield uses the Greater Wall Bash, uh, service, they've submitted a, um, fee for their membership, is that, would that be a true statement there, Libby? Uh, but there is also another group, uh, that, uh, you know, has shown interest, um, you know, in, in offering some services to the city for grant writing. And I believe that was included in your packet, um, so we, you have a, a, a couple of options and so we'll open that up for discussion.
Uh, I kinda feel at this time, you know, after reading through the, the, the second proposal, um, that more information would be needed from them and, you know, they could be worked into something at a later time. But, I mean, I think for right now, staying with Greater Wall Bash for the twenty-five hundred dollars is the, I don't, yeah, I mean, I don't know how much to say about the other proposals, so I just, without having some more, I mean, I think we could maybe work into something with them at a later date, but right now, uh, the Greater Wall Bash is, would be great to go, I think.
Okay, any other discussion?
Maybe a little bit.
Libby's knocking her head, yes, she's okay with that, um, so i- is there a motion to approve the Greater Wall Bash contract? And that amount is twenty-five hundred dollars?
Uh, I have one more, uh, I don't think I saw anything, there, there wasn't anything that would exclude us from being able to use the other company for something smaller at a later date.
I don't believe.
It looked like it was just you paying a membership fee to have their services, okay.
I don't believe they're saying that, that we can only use their services if that's what they wanna do.
Yeah.
So, did you make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, McGill, with the Greater Wall Bash.
And a second by Alderman McGill to approve the Greater Wall Bash area. Roll call.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzy B.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yes.
Stoll.
Yes.
Adderbury.
Yes.
And Eccleberry.
Yes.
And that motion is approved. If there's no objection from the council, I, I would like to take items ten, eleven, and twelve and just roll it into one vote. Uh, all three of them deal with street closings, uh, the first street closing is for the Fall Fun Fest, I believe that is through September the fourteenth through the seventeenth, is that correct? Fourteenth through the eighteenth, uh, for the Fall Fun Fest. The next request is from the First Baptist Church, uh, and they are requesting that the, uh, um, closure of Douglas Street between South First and Southeast Second, street closing from the hours of five P M. to eight P M. on Monday, August the first through Friday, August the fifth. And, uh, this third request is, uh, the, uh, a car show throughout to the college. And they are asking that, uh, on July the thirtieth, which would be this Saturday, that, uh, we close, uh, the, the industrial and Bobcat venue, or A- Avenue, I believe it's called, from, from the highway to Mount Vernon Road and the, the one that runs industrial down to the, uh, Rack of, what used to be the old Rack of Ball Club for their car show. Uh, spoke with, uh, lead man from the street and bridge, Robert Camp, you know, he says there's no issues in getting the barricades or anything out there. Any discussion on any of, of the requested street closings?
I'll make the motion that we go ahead with the closing.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Stoll, a second by Eccleberry to approve the three street closings, roll call vote, Lizzy B.
Yes.
Um, McGill.
Yep.
Reaver.
Yes.
Stoll.
Yes.
Adderbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
And those three motions are approved. Uh, item number thirteen is the recreation fund request, I'll turn that over to Alderman Lampley as he's the chairman of the recreation committee.
So, once again, the recreation funds comes from the Hotel Motel Tax and we're still working towards the Eclipse. We have, uh, found a supplier for the Eclipse glasses and heeding all the advice that we've been given, we would like to move forward with purchasing them. And that, was there anything else on, what was, yeah, was there another item, Libby, as part of the recreation, or is it just the Eclipse glasses on this one? Okay.
Unless you wanna do the shirts now.
Yeah. Oh, yes, and the, I knew there was something else, yeah, and we had talked about at the ti- um, it mentioned, but was never actually acted upon, was, uh, taking money for the fireworks and that was for five thousand dollars in addition, and then the glasses, we were gonna say three thousand?
They're twenty-nine fifty plus shipping.
Uh, thirty-one hundred dollars for the, uh, Eclipse glasses. Now, we are gonna be looking over the next year and a half or whatever for sponsors, we expect money to come in, 'cause we want to get all the kids in our area and as far out as we can, glasses, shirts, things like that for this Eclipse. We wanna make this a really big event, uh, we've already had some people that have shown interest in being sponsorship, so we don't expect to be out a ton of money off this, we just need to buy this stuff now because as it gets closer, it will be very hard to get, we feel. So, the request would be for eighty-one hundred dollars out of the recreation fund, which comes to the recreation fund for the, out of the Hotel Motel Tax.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
You second it, Kelly. Have a motion by Reaver, a second by A- um, Adderbury to approve the recreation fund request, McGill.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yes.
Stoll.
Yes.
Adderbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzy B.
Yes.
And that motion passes. Uh, the last item on the, the agenda under routine business is a discussion with possible approval. Uh, the last council meeting, there was some discussion on contractor dumping at our facilities on King Street. Uh, it was recommended that the, uh, Street and Bridge Committee, uh, have a meeting or get together and come back to the city council uh, with an, a, an approval or a recommendation there, uh, Alderman Lizzy B.
I reached out to each individual member of the, the Legislative Committee and the Street and Bridge Committee and we were all in agreement to, uh, no contractor dump.
Okay, so is the recommendation of the Street and Bridge Committee, uh, that the contractors will not be allowed to do any dumping at the city site?
Correct.
Okay. Discussion on that, I mean, that, I believe that's currently how the ordinance is written, but, uh, you know, just a side note here, um, we would, we need, uh, Attorney Rice to change some, uh, language, uh, in the current ordinance, if you look at fifty-one dot thirty-seven, you know, there's still some talk about, uh, contractors being able to pay two hundred and fifty dollars and receive a key, um, and insurance requirements for them, so to kinda clean up the ordinance, you know, we would ask that Attorney Rice strike through, uh, fifty-one thirty-seven, B, C, and D. Again, B just dealt with, the contractor could pay the city two hundred and fifty dollars and get a key to the gate. Um, and C dealt with, uh, executing an agreement stating that fact. And, uh, D was the contractor was to bribe us with liability coverage while they were on ours there. But if we're not going to allow any dumping, uh, of anything there, uh, those need stricken from our ordinances.
Yep, I, will do, I, I took notes on that, but, yeah.
Okay, any other d- discussion from the council meeting, uh, it's closed now, so we don't need, we do not need to take a vote to keep it closed, correct? Attorney Rice?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, is there any discussion of otherwise allowing it, I mean, or is the council happy with, uh, staying with the recommendation of the, uh, committee and, and keeping the facility closed?
I would say it looks good out there and there's no need to open it back, but.
Okay.
I'm okay with that, but what kind of deal is going out when he's in town? Is that ever really dumping stuff out there at the reservoir?
The only thing that is.
Different.
The only thing that's been allowed to be taken out to the old reservoir. there were some trees that were cut down on city property that were allowed to be taken out there, I mean, we don't wanna get, you know, get that started, you know, if we've gotta put it under lock and key, that's what we need to do. Any other discussions? If not, we'll move on to the miscellaneous, the only thing that I will say under the miscellaneous, you know, I, I would like to have another town hall meeting, I would like to schedule that on August the sixteenth at six o'clock here at City Hall to give our residents the, the ability to come in and discuss some, just about anything they wanna discuss. Again, that'll be August the sixteenth at six o'clock, it'll be here at City Hall. Anybody else got anything under miscellaneous they'd like to bring up? If there's nothing else under miscellaneous, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned, thank you for everybody for attending.